Call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled, called and convened Greer City Council meeting held April the 9th, 2024. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilman Lee Dumas, if you would, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and then an invocation for council. Join us, if you wish, by standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for this night that you've given us this day. Thank you for this council, this great city that we get to live in, for the staff that serve our city, and for the people that live here. God continue to bless and enrich and empower us as we serve. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Ms. Munoz, anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, the minutes of your council meeting on March the 26th, 2024, contained in your packet. I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Munoz.
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Betis?
Yes.
Mrs. Alber?
Yes.
Mayor Danner.
Yes. Counsel, we have a special recognition this evening. We have with us some of the 2024 City of Greer Juryed Art Show winners. Robin Bayuk, who is our cultural arts supervisor, will join me tonight as we recognize some folks who participated in the art show and have received awards. I know some people are not able to join us, but I'm going to go ahead and read our list of winners this evening. If you are able to be with us, if you would, come join us in the front, and we will get a picture made. In the visual arts categories, first place went to the string of coral. She won first place and the second place. Third place goes to Shay Black. And an honorable mention to Joe Watson. Give these folks a round of applause. Y'all just slide down a little bit, then, and we're going to try to get everybody in one back. In the student visual arts, honorable mention is Scarlett Knopf. Fourth place is Kylie Simmons. Third place goes to Penelope Boo. Second place goes Shaylyn Davis. And first place bested show is to Gina Clayton. Give these folks a round of applause. In photography, fourth place goes to Mac Loftus. Mac, don't get too far. Come right over here, just a second. Third place is to Mac Loftus. Second place is to Blaine Owens. And first place goes to Mac Loftus. Let's give these folks a round of applause. Let's see if we can figure out two rows maybe or something to get everybody in. Yeah, just slide down, and maybe move some folks around. This is the last category, and that's our student photography. So second place goes to Mia Fioras. And Kara Oliver is first place. Congratulations to our students. And that is it. So if we want to get a picture, we'll try to accommodate as best we can.
Should let Mac take it.
Yeah. Might win next year's award.
All right.
Good seeing you, man.
I grew up with him, all his brothers and sisters.
I did too. Two years old.
Two years older than me.
How far are you?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They live behind where the Burger King is now, back in that area.
Twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you know how it used to be when I was twenty-nine.
Yeah, right where the Five Guys is. Three flights.
A long time ago.
It's been nice to be so talented.
Much appreciated.
It's always good to recognize our winners, whether or not it's a jury to art show or if it's a youth wrestling program. And we like to take those opportunities to recognize those folks in our community that are participating in all sorts of events that we sponsor. And we are always glad to recognize those people that are participating in our programs and are achieving awards of any kind. And so we like to bring them in from time to time. I think that you would find, if you had the opportunity to walk through this building, that a fair amount of the jury to art is hanging actually in this building. And we like to acquire some of that art from time to time when we're able to do it. Mr. Mayor, man, it's time for the administrator's report, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, just a few quick announcements on the fun things doing Greer side. First is auditions for Greer Idol and Greer Idol Junior are tonight from six to eight. And so if you're not there, you need to get there. Secondly, get ready for an unforgettable evening at our food truck rollout this year on the 12th, April 12th. We will have again a number of food trucks, live music, refreshing beverages, et cetera. So that's April 12th from five to eight here at City Park. The next Greer Farmers Market is April 14th from 11 to two here in City Park. Celebrate Earth Day with us and with Greer Relief, featuring 40 vendors with food trucks, live music, and a showcase for local organizations. And finally, Greer Goes Global with the International Festival on April 20th from 11 to four. This is the time when we celebrate the cultures of the upstate with Greer's International Festival at Greer City Park. It's always a popular event. It'll have featured country tents, food trucks, vendors, sports, and an international market. So that's something that I know that everybody looks forward to annually, and that is right around the corner. Again, that's April 14th, excuse me, April 20th from 11 to four. Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Counsel, we rather sadly have a appointment to the boards and commission on the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Ralph Johnson, who most of us knew, passed away recently, and his term would have expired on the 31st of 2024. We'll need someone to fill his position on the Construction Board of Adjustments and I believe that position comes with some qualifications, if I'm not mistaken, and we'll look to staff for recommendations and/or counsel. If you'd like to make a suggestion, that would need to go to staff.
Mr. Mayor, I think our building official, Ms. Ham, she has recommended Keith Flynn, who fits those qualifications required.
Thank you, sir. We have a nomination. Do I hear a second?
Second.
With that, floor is open for discussion or questions.
If it's the Keith Flynn that I knew from a very long time ago, he was, in my opinion, the hardest-hitting fullback Greer highs ever seen.
That's a good qualification.
As my mother said, he was part of a group of boys that when they ran by you, they sounded like a herd of elephants.
Well, I suppose, I guess that's all we need to know then. Others?
Is that the qualifications for being on this board?
His nickname was Sparky.
Hearing none, Ms. Munoz.
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Betis?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mrs. Alber?
Yes.
Mr. Danner?
Yes. As we go to old business, I'd like to thank Ms. Munoz for stepping in tonight. Ms. Munoz is helping us with our clerks' responsibilities, and we thank you for being here this evening. We'll move to old business, the first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 15-2024. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of certain properties owned by Brian Fowler, Greg Taylor, and et cetera custodian, FBO Gregory Taylor, and IRA located on North Main Street and Wild Wood Drive from DRD to Traditional Neighborhood. Ms. Cotty joins us for this discussion. Any new or additional information in regards to the second and final reading of ordinance number 15-2024?
No, sir, no updates.
I'll entertain, for the purpose of discussion, a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Munoz.
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Betis?
Yes.
Mrs. Alber?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to the second and final reading of ordinance number 16-2024. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Claudia C. Oremilio and Andres Ramirez located at 107 Mimosa Drive from MD, a medium density residential to OP, office professional. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to the second and final reading of ordinance number 16-2024?
No, there are no updates.
Hearing none, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
If they're going to develop this property, will they have to cut down the mimosa trees?
I am not certain, but there is an existing house on the property that they're planning to convert to office, so they will have to do very little work with trees.
Very good answer.
Or site work.
I think as long as they don't add anymore, they're okay.
Just don't add anymore.
Yeah, just don't add anymore.
Mimosas will add their own.
Yeah. Questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Munoz.
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Betis?
Yes.
Mrs. Alber?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to the third item we have under old business. This is the second and final reading of ordinance number 17-2024. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Adalinda Garcia located at 600 Hampton Road from MD to TN Neighborhood. Any new or additional information in that regard, Ms. Cotty?
No, there are no updates.
Hearing no updates, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. The floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Munoz.
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Betis?
Yes.
Mrs. Alber?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Let's move to the last item of old business. This is the second and final reading of ordinance number 19-2024. This is the 13th supplemental ordinance providing for the issuance and the sale of City of Greer, South Carolina Combined Utility System Revenue Bonds in one or more series in the aggregate principal amount of not exceeding $21,700,000, authorizing the mayor or city administrator and the chairman or general manager of the Greer Commission of Public Works to determine certain matters with respect to the bonds, prescribing the form and detail of the bonds and any other matters relating thereto. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Munoz.
Mr. Erwood?
No.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Betis?
Yes.
Mrs. Alber?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Counsel, let's move to items of new business this evening. First of which is the pavement preservation project, HA5 Surface Sealer. Mr. Grant, our city engineer, joins us for this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are continuing our pavement preservation efforts with two proposed projects this year, one with HA5 Surface Sealer and one with the Reclamite Asphalt Juvenator. We've used both these products the past two years, so we'll continue that effort. The first one in your packet is the HA5 Surface Sealer. They should have a map in your packet and also on the screen here. The blue highlighted subdivisions are HA5 areas proposed. These subdivisions were recently crack sealed, and it is common to surface seal after crack sealing. The total treatment is 4.2 miles. The contractor is Holbrook Asphalt, and they are the only licensed applicator of this product in South Carolina. Proposed contract amount is $264,240.28, and it is funded from the road paving fund, and staff requests approval to proceed with this surface sealer application project, and I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, this comes with a recommendation from staff. Do I hear a motion to receive?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Steve, how long have we been doing the surface sealer and the crack sealer? How many years have we been into this?
Surface sealer, this is the third year. Crack sealing is really before I got here. I think we've been doing crack sealing, yes, sir.
And what is the, using the surface sealer, how long is that supposed to extend the life of the asphalt?
Seven to 10 years.
Okay, so we don't, I guess we don't have enough data at this point, or nothing to observe that would say, yeah, this is working right now.
No, sir, not here in Greer, but just anecdotal data from other cities around the country is kind of, that's the norm, seven to 10 years.
So I guess probably next year we might be able to try to evaluate some of the roads as we halfway through that period, right?
Right. Actually, I've been, I go through and check them every so often to see how they're holding up. The HA5 actually looks very good.
Good.
From two years ago.
Mr. Grant, I'm obviously pleased to see several District III neighborhoods on these lists. Can you refresh my memory the difference between these two processes and products and why one's chosen, you know, one time or...
Yes. The HA5, this one, it's typically for roads that are a little bit older, like in the five to 10-year range. It is a surface sealer. It goes on the surface. It's a little thicker than the other product, and it lasts a little longer, and it is more expensive per square yard. The Reclamite, which is coming next, that is a different product. It is applied to the surface. It actually penetrates into the asphalt a quarter inch or so. It is cheaper. It is for newer streets, like less than five years old. It is the recommended timeframe to apply that, and you get three to seven years out of that product.
Is it strategically different in the timeline?
Yes, sir. The next one, I'll make a comment. These streets for the Reclamite are all were brought into the city for maintenance in the last few years, so they're relatively new. They're newer than the streets in this proposal.
Got it. Thank you.
The funds for both of these coming out of the road paving fund, it's already in there, or is that the new budget?
It's already in the current budget. Yes, sir, the current.
The one we're in right now?
Yes, sir.
Others?
I just want to say thank you for staying on top of these roads and especially doing things in the proper order, you know, where you crack seal first, and then you go behind and using these rejuvenators and these surface sealers. Across the statewide, that does not happen within the proper timeframe, because it's within a certain timeframe, these things need to occur. So thank you for using our dollars in the proper manner. I really appreciate that.
Sir, thank you.
I was reminded earlier today of a former city engineer that caught this council's attention some 15-plus years ago. I know there was a couple of us on the council at that time that we had found it easy in the first couple of years of budgeting, when things were tough, to cut our road paving money. And I remember a presentation that he gave that used a chart to show the conditions of our road and how they were going to decline over the next 15 years with a line that indicated the amount of money that we were putting towards repairing or replacing them across that to show us where we were going to be in 15 years. And I think it caught our attention immediately, because the lines only bisected in about the first quarter inch, and other than that, they were going in opposite directions at a real fast pace. And so this council is to be commended for, and our engineering department as well, too, for taking as many proactive actions as we can possibly take, because just like the old commercial says, you can pay me now or pay me later. And putting it on the ground now has really extended the life of a lot of our roads. And I believe, I see Mr. Smith sitting back there. If you would stand, sir, I think that, I believe you are a commissioner now on the penny road tax that Greenville County has proposed, and will be representing the Greer and upstate area in that effort. And so we thank you for your service and your time. We realize that there's going to be a lot of hours spent on your behalf in the run-up to this vote, and we appreciate you taking that civic service on for us, and thank you, sir. Yep, we appreciate it.
Mayor, I would make one more comment. You mentioned the previous councils and this council. That was, in my opinion, a wise decision, because I was just looking at the data today from the recent, you know, study the contractor did, the pavement evaluation, and I was comparing the numbers from this year to four years ago, and we're actually, we're holding our own, or maybe even the PCI maybe went up a couple of points in the last four years. So that's a plus. That's a thumbs up for the money.
Well, I'll tell you the other thing that has helped this effort, and again, counsel is to be commended on this, but when we first started doing, taking what money we had and trying to figure out how to distribute it, it was a very political process. And y'all can imagine what gyrations we went through with the limited amount of money that we had to figure out whose district was going to get what and whose district was going to get not, and that sort of thing. And I know there was a lot of trading and swapping and backroom deals and that sort of thing, and I think one of the best things we ever did was to go to a subjective measurement of our roads and sidewalks using technology now. And I do appreciate the efforts of our staff to maintain that, and it's interesting how technology is evolving to give us even more accurate information on our roads and sidewalks over time, and we appreciate that.
That was one of my planks in my platform that I ran on the very first time, just take the political process out of it.
Well, there wasn't very much to go around to begin with.
No, there wasn't, but I tell you, our roads have really, you're right. I mean, all of council needs to be patting everybody on the back, because we've put a big, made a big effort to improve our roads, and it shows.
It does. Well, let's move on then, because another item that we've got, well, we've got to take a vote on it. Other comments or questions in regards to the pavement preservation project, the HA5 Surface Sealer? Hearing none, Ms. Munoz.
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Betis?
Yes.
Mrs. Alber?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Let's move to the second item, which is the pavement preservation project known as Reclamite Rejuvenator. Mr. Grant?
Yes, sir. This project, if you see on your map, it's the subdivisions highlighted in red. These streets were all accepted into the city for maintenance in the last several years, so they're just slightly newer than the others. The total mileage being treated is 2.3 miles. The contractor is Pavement Technology Incorporated, and they are the only licensed applicator in South Carolina and the eastern United States. The proposed contract amount is $38,556, and it is funded from the road paving fund. And you may recall from earlier presentations about this that APWA, the American Public Works Association, recommends that we spend 10% to 25% of our road maintenance budget on preservation-related projects, and these two projects will put us at 19%. So we fall into the 10% to 25%. Staff does request approval to proceed with this rejuvenation application project.
Counsel, the recommendation from staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for questions. Hearing none, Ms. Munoz.
Mr. Edward?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mrs. Alber?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, next item before you is the first and final reading of Resolution Number 5-2024, Resolution to Authorize an Agreement with Mitsubishi Chemical America Incorporated. Mr. Mayorman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. About, well, almost 14 years ago now, this council entered into an agreement with Mitsubishi for the provision of fire services to Mitsubishi. In exchange, there was a monetary agreement along with the purchase of fire apparatus. This is the next iteration of that agreement. It's very similar in nature for this, the term will be a 10-year term and the, we've agreed with Mitsubishi on a number of financial matters, including an annual payment. And in this particular case, an annual payment and the donation of some real property for the extension of our public safety operations on that, on that property.
Counsel, this council, the recommendation from staff, do I hear a motion? This is the first and final reading of a resolution, Number 5-2024. For the purpose of discussion, I hear a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Mayorman?
Yes, sir.
Does, let's say Mitsubishi ceases and another company, they're bought out, whatever, do the terms of our agreement transfer to the new owner?
There's not a transfer agreement. No, sir. No, the new owner would, we'd have to renegotiate that agreement with them. However, in this particular case, the real property will be deeded to the city and will remain the city's.
Okay. Others? Comments?
One question. I notice in the agreement, it says we maintain an ISO rating, a certain level. Do those ratings come along every year or is it every five years? I know we just recently did it, but.
Yeah, the ISO, we do, they do a full review, if I'm not mistaken, every three.
Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Munoz.
Mr. Edward?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mrs. Alber?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to the first and final reading of Resolution 10-2024. This is the allocation of Greenville County's CDBG funds and the home funds for program year 2024. Mike Sell, Deputy City Administrator, joins us for this discussion. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayorman and I met with GCRAT staff in early March to review our program and the annual action plan. That action plan was presented to council or presented at a public hearing prior to council's meeting two weeks ago. The budget and, and funding allocations that were recommended during the public hearing are reflected in the resolution that's before you tonight and staff supports the recommendations as presented. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Comes with the recommendation from staff. It's the first and final reading of Resolution Number 10-2024. For the purpose of further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
A motion.
Have a motion to hear a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Munoz.
Mr. Edward?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mrs. Alber?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel, the fifth item before us this evening is a, another resolution. This is the first and final reading of Resolution Number 12-2024. This is a resolution in consideration of a request for closure of an alley in the city of Greer and to refer the closure to the city attorney pursuant to City Ordinance Number 78-11. Mr. Mayorman?
This is the beginning of the process by which the city takes action to close an alley or any other publicly held easement. In this particular case, we've had a request from Mammonens to permanently close, indeed, any interest it may have in a six-foot alley located on property owned by the same. This is identified on Spartanburg Tax Map Number 931314. And as you can see in the attachments in your exhibits, you'll see that this easement is with, is entirely within the property owned by the applicant. If council decides to vote in favor of this, it will then go to the city attorney where we will schedule a public hearing on the closure and notify the adjacent property owners. It is important to note that the utility companies did not assert any objection or response to the closure.
Counsel, this is a resolution. This will be the first and final reading of Resolution Number 12-2024. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Munoz.
Mr. Edward?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mrs. Alber?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to item six, first and final reading of Resolution Number 13-2024, Resolution of the City of Greer, South Carolina Confirming Its Participation in Installment, Purchase Type Arrangement and Plan of Financing Relating to Various Capital Projects in the City and Other Related Matters. Mr. Mayorman?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, counsel, this, this is a resolution effectively ratifying the action taken by the Corporation for Greer outlining the projects that were listed in the bond ordinance that y'all took action on at the last council meeting. This is the final step in the process, but in, in effect, it is council agreeing that the projects listed in the resolution that the Corporation for Greer took action on are the projects listed in the original bond ordinance.
Counsel, it is a resolution with the first and final reading. This is Resolution Number 13-2024. I'll entertain a motion for the purpose of discussion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open.
Mr. Mayorman, let me get straight on some things here again.
Yes, sir.
The Corporation for Greer?
Yes, sir.
That's the same type organization as Greer Trust?
Yes, sir.
And the reason we didn't use Greer Trust was?
Greer Trust at the time took no action on the resolution that was presented to them initially. The sentiment, as I took it in the meeting, was that they did not have any desire to continue their role as the trust to take on these new projects.
So it wasn't a lack of confidence in the, in the amount of money in the projects, was it?
I, it could have been part of it, yeah. I think that was part of it. I can't speak specifically to their, their motivations for their desire. I think part of it was the amount of time they had spent on the trust. I think some of it was, it could have been some lack of confidence in the financing structure. It could have been any number of things. It could have been even their, their level of involvement in the projects on, from the onset.
Well, is this new entity legal?
It is 100% legal.
Because when we did the other, our esteemed legislator at the time pushed through legislation to prevent it from happening again because of the best corporation that the Greenville County Schools had set up. So he didn't want that happening anymore to circumvent basically our, our bond debt.
This meets all requirements of state code.
Does.
This is 100% legal, yes, sir. And it is, it is something that is, these 501(c)(3)'s are set up to issue the debt on behalf of cities and counties throughout the state. As a matter of fact, if I'm not mistaken, I think the school districts in, in total actually use the same 501(c)(3) set up at the state level. So it is, it is well within the state code and.
Well, they, they did it before anybody. The, the law came after that. That was the impetus for the law.
This is, this is legal, yes, sir.
Okay. Here's, here's one of my major questions. When we did Greer Trust?
Yes.
Council was fully involved in the formation and the staffing of Greer Trust. I have yet to find out who is on the new body. I have no idea how it was done, when it was done, why it was done. I know why it was done now. But I know nothing about it. It says here that there was a resolution passed by this body already and I haven't seen that resolution. I know, I know zero about this new entity.
The resolution was informed in the, the bond documents that, that, or the, the ordinance that was passed by council. The, the entity itself was formed by names drawn from council as we looked to set up the citizens groups, which was the executive committee, the steering committees, et cetera, for the for Greer initiative to give that citizen buy-in and involvement in the process. That's where we, those, those names were, were drawn from. And the, the sole purpose of the Corporation for Greer or any 501(c)(3) that's set up like this is to issue debt on behalf of the city, full stop. And so this body was, was, was put together by those folks that were willing to serve this community and do that.
Well, and, and we've talked a lot about communication here lately. I believe it was totally wrong not to have council more fully involved in the creation of this new entity and who is serving on it.
Yes, sir.
I think that's just wrong. Because we are the elected officials. We ultimately need to answer for what this body does. I just, I don't think it was done correctly.
I will add that, that I was, a primary part of that process, we took the list of names that were submitted by this body and I tried to, with only five, I couldn't get one from every district, but I tried to pick those folks or to give information to Andy about who lived in what district and even contacted some of the, some of the folks by districts to make sure we had broad representation.
Well, I appreciate your effort for doing it, but it should have been done with the advice and consent of council, live and in person. And it would not have taken much to get us together to do that.
Noted.
I, I think, or future, that the reasoning that we had Greer Trust, or we still do have them, is so we could, and correct me if I'm wrong, but exceed our bonding capacity based on what the state said we could do.
That's absolutely right.
And so that's the, the purpose of that group. So probably it would be, and if, if I understand what went on with Greer Trust, yeah, I think there was some of, they didn't have faith in this, this, this construction projects that we want to undertake. That, I guess they were using, they were going to try to use their influence the way they felt like they could on these projects when that's out of their scope and realm of their service. So I, it may be wise that what we do is we say, for this group and any other groups that are set up hereafter, that that's all. That's the, basically, that's your term of service. If, if the city decides to do more with this type of 501(c)(3), then, then it will be a new group and council will appoint those folks. That way, you know, as a citizen, they, they can oppose or they can, they can give their support. But as a group, they won't have that because we're the ones that have to make the, the decisions. And so.
Not sounding that way to me. Well, I don't think we're going to have much decisions to be made.
Well, I, I understand, but that's totally different than what I'm saying. I'm saying we take that, we take that, that committees or that groups, whoever it may be, have them serve for the purpose they were appointed to serve, period. And then, so you don't have, what we had just now is that they are, that, that committee or that group would cease to exist when that debt has expired. But they would not be used to do any other, help with any other funding. That makes sense?
Yeah, and I, I, I think you're right because, you know, one of the things that I did hear from the Greer Trust was, and particularly their chairman at one point in time, was, you know, they, they, they've, they've invested 18 years at this point on, on that project. And, you know, there was obviously some angst about committing to another 30 years on, 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 on a new bond. And so I, I think, I think you're correct, Jay. I think, you know, we've sunset these as, as we do. And the other thing, and it's already been brought up, and, and I guess to your point, Riley, you know, there, there is probably going to be as much or more involvement using, using this, using this vehicle differently than we have in the past. You know, one of the, one of the things that Greer Trust did was to actually get involved in deciding who the architect was going to be, who the builder was going to be. You know, there was decisions along those lines that would be made. And, and I don't know at this point in time with the staff that we've got in terms of, of the diversity of things that they can handle. I think we'll probably be as much or more involved in some of those decisions than, than, than we were on, you know, on the original. And now we obviously set the scope of the, of the project. We wanted to see it look like, you know, a mill. We wanted it to be brick and that sort of thing. But we weren't in on, on some of the day-to-day stuff. And I don't imagine that we will be this time as, either. But I think that there's going to be a lot of opportunity for us to help shape at least the recreation center. The others are pretty, pretty well set at this point. So, yeah, I, I agree. There's, you know, there's, there's things that we can, we can certainly do differently. There's things we certainly could have done differently. We, we are, we are where we are at, at this point. And, you know, the other thing that's going to happen is those names that we solicited from y'all, we've also begun to break those up into committees as well, too. So you are going to be seeing some, some committees that are going to help involve the public in this process as well, too. So we will be doing that as well. Mr. Bettis?
Just one other question. In, in terms of the sports facility, do we intend or have we already thought about approaching some sponsors to defray the cost of that?
Yes, sir, we have. And we are actually working, one of the goals of the executive committee is going to be primarily to help us identify those sponsorship opportunities, establish the value of those sponsorship opportunities and then see. Yes, sir. That is 100% part of this.
Going back to what the mayor was saying and, and our involvement, I most definitely want to be able to help recommend a method for picking basically a construction team of designers, the, the architect designers, possible, you know, a list of contractors, that kind of thing. I, I think that's important.
I, I will add this, Mr. Edward, and I, I appreciate that. And I think your insight in the construction business will be helpful. I think what we're going to do or have I think what we're going to do, or have to do, would be to establish those parameters about how we want to do it because there are already two or three schools of thought about different construction types and particularly in the management of those projects and that sort of thing. I think the one thing that we're going to have to do to keep us separated in terms of our obligations and roles as legislators as opposed to those that are on the staff, I'm averaging about one call a day or text a day from construction companies and already getting lunch invites and dinner invites and that sort of thing, so...
Take share of the wealth, you know.
For, well, I haven't taken any of them at this point. I think we're going to have to insulate ourselves from that because it would, not that I'm insinuating that anybody here would help influence or want to push the influence of that, but we do in our role need to keep that separate from staff's role.
Exactly. And what I'm, and I'm not saying that we insert ourselves into, I think we set the parameters of how staff looks at architects, how they look at design, how they look in choosing a contractor, and the best method of how we will get numbers back to evaluate them. Is it going to be, you know, just a hard bid or will it be something? Because we have a project manager on staff, and I think I've spoken to you and I know, I've spoken to Mr. Mayorman about it, that there is a somewhat of a trend out there that government entities are, they're finding that whatever form of the design bill that's out there is not providing the savings that they expected, and they're turning away from some of that.
Well, and I don't think you would mind me sharing, you know, in the discussions that we have already had, you know, we've had one contractor say that if we didn't use this particular type of model, that they wouldn't be bidding. We've had a contractor that when Mr. Mayorman said, you know, we want to use local, use as many local subcontractors as we can, you know, the first thing they wanted was some parameters about what local is and, you know, that kind of thing. And, you know, so I think we're going to have to, we're going to have to put the railings on the side and let them make a recommendation to us to approve. Others?
When it comes to updates on the project, I mean, I was on Facebook today. I saw that we posted some information about the parking garage. How regularly do you foresee us maybe just getting a quick, you know, 10-minute update? This is where we are, how things are looking?
So there's two ways of going, well, there's a number of ways of going about doing that. The first and foremost is some formal project updates that we can bring to council through the administrator's report once the projects are actually moving. That, to me, is probably the most timely and accurate because you'll get live fire every two weeks and then, of course, in our ordinary, just correspondence throughout the week, those are always just kind of stream of consciousness type things. So there'll be that. I also intend to work with our IT department to have live construction feeds so the public will be able to see the progress of these projects as they're going on as well. Plus, through our social media, be it website, be it, you know, TikTok, be it Instagram, all the things that we use to dedicate time and space on all of those things for those construction updates for the public. But the formal updates will come through me to you.
Now, I have a problem with any information, whether it's formal or informal, being released before council knows it. Say, for instance, on Facebook, I didn't know that. I don't have Facebook, so I believe that we have the ability to notify all the council, hey, this is going out today. Because if I get somebody that says, hey, this was on Facebook, what do you know about it? I don't know anything about it. And that's, yeah, I think any information before it goes out on social media...
I can assure you, Mr. Arrowood, that this council does not know anything, does not know something that's germane to your role as legislators before it goes out. I can...
For what it's worth, the post was just, it was just showing preliminary renderings. It wasn't illustrating any material change to the project or the specs or anything that way.
Have you seen any renderings? Have you seen any renderings?
I haven't seen any renderings online. I saw renderings months ago.
But when we did all the press releases, all of those things were part of that. When we did the announcement, we had renderings for the public out there. All of those things have been presented in one way, shape, or form.
I don't want to debate this because I just go down the wrong path.
And if council, you know, beyond updates, if the, you know, I know we're all busy, but if y'all want to do a quarterly workshop for a progress report on any of the projects that are in the four Greer project and/or other projects that are going on, we can accommodate, staff can accommodate that. We'll figure that out. We can come in at 5:30 and go to 6:30 and pull in the folks that need to be here if that's council's prerogative.
Well, I guess the point, renderings, and I know renderings, that's subject to change before anything, but if someone is talking to me about what they saw on some outlet and they are either have questions or they don't like it or whatever, I don't have the ability, and I'm not going to get that ability, to look at that on Facebook. That's my whole point. It's not that there's anything going on that's in the shadows. It's just, I think that, you know, at least I believe that I need to know so I can not stammer and stutter.
I agree.
That's fair. I agree.
Mr. Mayorman, as part of this construction process, are we required to go by the state procurement system?
In this particular process, we will follow our own procurement. So in this case, we will, after we determine the method by which we're going to deliver the project, whether it's seen at risk, whether it is a hard design bid build, we will go through our process that will allow for that. But effectively, this council, the governing body, can establish that procurement process. My recommendation would be at this time, to the mayor's point, what will help us is through the solicitation of expectations is for any contract that would come in, we establish minimums for WNBE. We establish minimums for local preference. And any other things that this council would like to see in that solicitation, I think I would appreciate that guidance before, as we craft the RFQ to go out for that. I think it's only fair to anybody that will apply, that they know on the front end what those expectations are.
First and final reading of Resolution 13-2024. No, excuse me. Yeah, 13...
Two the same number?
Yeah, we got two that are the same thing. This is first reading, first...
It's 13-2024.
One's resolution, one's ordinance.
One's ordinance, okay. This is the Resolution 13-2024. Excuse me. Questions? Hearing none, Ms. Munoz?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mrs. Alber?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, the last item before us this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 13-2024. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Greer Unified Development Ordinance. The UDO inaction is required. We had a workshop prior to our meeting tonight to go over some of those changes. For the purpose of further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance number 13-2024.
A motion.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for questions.
I'd just like to make a comment from going through the workshop when we were here. I just feel like that this blanket request from Upstate Forever is very cumbersome. I just, I think there's a lot of detail and a lot of changes that are kind of mixed into this, and I'm not really huge on the, you know, that change from the 30-inch to the 60. The piece about engaging a certified arborist, there were two or three items in here that just seemed kind of cumbersome and really seemed to put the brakes on an already difficult policy to navigate. I don't have an issue with, you know, what you've requested of staff, and I thought that what was recommended by the designer on here was palatable. I just, I wasn't huge on just the whole blanket Upstate Forever piece. I mean, if we took those off, you know, one or two as we go based on, you know, issues or things that we've run into or feedback, I think that would be a little bit easier, but I just, I think it's too much.
Your motion to exclude the Upstate Forever suggestions for now?
Well, I think the motion we just made was to have discussion on this. Is that correct? So if I was going to make a motion, it would be to amend, be to amend the ordinance to just, to approve staff's recommendation and to approve this DPR designer's recommendation, but to exclude the Upstate Forever recommendations.
Without malice.
Without malice, absolutely. I just, I feel like it's just, it's too much. I think it's just, it's just a sweeping change that would require a great deal of involvement on the front end, and it would really slow down the process, which I already think is cumbersome enough.
I agree wholeheartedly.
Staff doesn't have any concerns with that. The only one, the current language regarding the heritage trees in the ordinance, I suspect that you guys may want to strike that language. So upon, or at least take it out for now while we look at alternative language. It does not appear that there's any remedy, so it is saying that you cannot remove a tree of 60 inches on a site. So I would probably recommend that even if you do decide to exclude Upstate Forever's recommendation, that we maybe include either striking the heritage language altogether or having it mirror the significant tree language, which is right before it, which requires kind of an extra replacement.
Well, there has to be some type of alternative, you know, to, if you take the, if it's a 30-inch tree or a 60-inch tree or whatever, I mean, you know, it's kind of like carbon credits, you know, you have to have some type of exchange. You can't just have a blanket policy that says you can't take down a tree. If every tree on that's between 30 to 60 inches, then you have a lot that you can't develop.
Agree completely, and I believe this was an oversight. So right now, the way the ordinance reads is if there are trees over 60 inches that are native species, those are considered heritage and cannot be removed.
But why don't we, if you're so inclined to remove the recommendations from Upstate Forever, because this is only the first reading, that what's in place now would not be taken out until the second reading is approved. So I guess they, staff could come back by second reading with a solution for that.
For just the heritage one or others?
I think I have heartburn, too, with the certified arborist piece that's in here about the oversight with inspections. I just, I think it could become very cumbersome and you'd have to get them engaged and then have to come back to you to make sure it was approved. And I think the mayor was making some good points, too, about plant materials and, you know, that requirement with the bonding and different things. I think there just needs to be, some of this really needs to be filtered and...
Well, you said no update proposed. Does that mean no update to our ordinance or no update to what they suggest?
No update to the ordinance to address their concerns.
So no update proposed means forget that one?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Grant, correct me if I'm wrong or if you know. It's my understanding that Public Services Department uses an arborist now for at least all of our downtown trees in terms of health checkups and fertilization and some other things that are going on. Are they not arbifflora? Do not, don't they?
I'm not positive.
I do know...
Mr. Self? I do know we have an arborist that we contract with for care for the trees downtown.
Yes, sir. We do, like the projects that we do with the city, if we have trees that we need to remove, we always have an arborist come in and review that. Make the determination of a couple of things. One, if it becomes a nuisance tree, a lot of the stuff doesn't apply. So trees that got a lot dead, parts in, no matter what size is, you can remove that tree because it's a nuisance, it's dying, it's old or whatever. So the utilization of arborists in this is so that it gives them a way to have that review done to possibly exclude a lot of old trees that maybe are of diameter that are dying. So it may seem cumbersome, but it's a valuable tool for us to be able to have in order to find ways to be able to address concerns when it comes to, if we cut down a tree, do we have to replace it? And we do that in all of our projects that we do that may need to involve...
And I think to your point, thank you. I think to your point, you know, it's semantics in some regard, you know, is a heritage tree going to be a 60-inch diameter or a 30-inch diameter? Well, you know, I had a professor at Clemson that said, no trees are replaceable. I mean, you know, if it's a 30-inch tree and it gets cut down, I think our ordinance calls for, you've got to replace X number of inches for every inch you cut down or whatever.
So with significant trees, which are 20 or more, it does. So the way it's written right now is a heritage tree with over 60 cannot be cut down. So I am very much agreeing with council that we should, even if we scrap other amendments, that we should amend that language at second reading.
Okay. Let's, counsel, let's consider this. There's obviously a lot to be digested here. Why don't we entertain a motion here to hold this matter over? How would that be at this point? Would that be fair enough? The motion was made by...
Motion received was made, who?
The first?
Yes, Ms. Alber.
Ms. Alber.
And then seconded by Mr. Booker.
Would you be willing to amend your motion to table?
Yeah, if you would amend your motion to table, then we'll go from there.
I'll amend my motion to table.
Okay, and seconded by Mr. Booker?
Yep, I'll do that.
Okay. So at this point, then, first reading of ordinance number 13-2024, we have a motion and a second to hold, let's hold this over to the table, this motion, until we've got more information at this point. Is that suitable with council? Is that understandable to staff?
Yes. So I think I have very good guidance for the Upstate Forever comments. Were there any other staff-initiated comments that you felt that you needed additional information or you'd like to see alternative language?
If so, let's contact our planning staff, okay?
Yes.
All right. At this point, then, we have an amended motion for first reading of ordinance number 13-2024. The motion is to hold this matter over or to table this matter until it's brought until it's brought back before this body. We all clear on that? Ms. Munoz?
Mr. Erwood?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr., did I miss one? Mr.?
Booker.
Booker. Mrs. Alber? Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Keep it on our feet.
We appreciate her effort. We thank you for filling in. We do indeed.
We better the second time.
Counsel, we have no matters for executive session. We stand adjourned.